I have an excuse for dressing like this since I just got back from Hawaii. I don't know about the rest of you.[5.12][5.12](laughter) Okay, I will call the meeting to order.
It's probably cooler in Hawaii than it is here.[11.54][11.54](laughter)
We had the typhoons coming at us. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and Dr. Cash, we will just enough pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
Muy buena noche. Tenemos los aparatos disponibles para la interpretación en español si es que alguien los llegará a necesitar. Muchas gracias. Thank you. We do have headsets for the hearing impaired are available if you need them. Introductions, proclamations, presentations or recognition and your superintendent's report. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Mr. Herron. It was quite warm today, wasn't it? And hot weather is expected for the next couple of days and we continue to follow the weather reports and to work with schools on ways to keep our students and staff as comfortable as possible. With the temperatures running high, schools kept keep cool by doing things like opening windows and doors, turning off the lights, using fans, limiting strenuous activities and conducting activities indoors. Our coaches have been very sensitive to this by increasing the number of breaks and also increasing the opportunities to hydrate. One of our principals today, I sent out several emails to staff reminding them to keep physical exercise to a minimum and to get inside when possible or outside if inside was too hot. She reported to me that she was the designated hydration officer at school today, which I thought was was kind of cute, but also very important for all of us to remember that hydration is essential and that we want to try to stay out of direct sunlight to the greatest extent possible. One of the things that we did today was send to all of our principals a reminder of all of their rooms that are air-conditioned so that if there were cases in which students were feeling uncomfortable, our staff was, they knew very quickly where they could take that person to cool down. So, it's been hot. Back-to-school night schedules are posted on our website and copies are available at the back of the room. And I want to ask you again to mark your calendar for a very special day, Tuesday, September 15th at 11:00 a.m. as there will be a ribbon cutting to celebrate the completion of Adams Library and Tech Lab. It's a great space and we welcome the community to visit and see this wonderful resource and we want to again thank our voters for supporting our bond measure Q. This Saturday on September 12th, Santa Barbara High School will host a CERT drill for about 150 Santa Barbara County first responders and CERT-trained members. And a reminder that CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Teams and is also part of our National Disaster Recovery Framework. The CERT program, which many, many of our staff have become CERT-trained, provides basic disaster response skills to community members so that they assist others in their neighborhood or workplace. And we will have district representatives there as well, led by Fran Wagonick and I believe Barbara Kiani will also be there. At 2:00, I want to remind all of you that we will be hosting our joint meeting with the Galita Union School District's Board of Education in this room. The meeting will take place beginning at 2:00 and we certainly invite the public to attend. Santa Barbara Public Education Foundation--
You didn't give the date.
--September 30th. I'm sorry. Santa Barbara Public Education Foundation's State of Our Schools is scheduled for Thursday, October 1st and for details, you people should contact the foundation at 284-9125.
Dr. Cash, where is that?
That will be at Fest Parker. And in addition to that, there will be a subsequent State of Our Schools that the district will sponsor and it will either be October 7th or October 14th at Franklin Elementary School. Sadly, longtime teacher Eileen Gerke passed away recently. She taught at Santa Barbara Junior High School for 31 years. Memorial service has been scheduled for tomorrow, September 9th at 4:00 p.m. in the school's library. And the family has asked that in lieu of flowers, donations be made to Santa Barbara Junior High School at 721 East Cota, Santa Barbara, 93103. And at this time, I'd like us all to engage in a moment of silence in memory of Ms. Gerke's life and her gift to our community. Thank you, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. I also noticed the passing of a San Barbara High School trainer who was there for 40 years. It sounds like a wonderful guy. I'm not sure what years he was there, how far back that goes of 40 years, but if he was an athlete, I presume he probably helped everybody who was an athlete at San Barbara High School. So, it was an interesting obituary and it's good that we have people like that in our district. Board comments and correspondence. I have just two items. One, it's sort of monotonous, but another letter from SB CEO congratulating us on our adopted budget. As a result of their analysis, I am pleased to notify you that your budget is approved, as submitted. So, that's two in a row. You've spent $1,000.
(inaudible)
Well, that's the two that I remember right--[368.31][368.31](laughter) --at the moment. My memory doesn't go back that far, any farther. But it's just great that we have a staff under Meg's leadership that puts together these documents and we get letters like this without any adjustments and so I think it's really nice and I appreciate it. I also this past had a meeting with the president of the SP TA and he had sent a communication to us about the illuminate situation. And I think the best that we came out of that meeting is that before that contract was renewed at the end of this fiscal year, that we should probably have a discussion on it once again to make sure that it's working as advertised and that there's the reasons to do it. So, I hope we can put that on the agenda 60 days, I think it is, before the end of our fiscal year. Those are all I had. So, nothing else. We'll go on to announcements of closed session. And I had it. Oh, here it is. In the issue of B1 approval denial of interstate transfer appeals for 2015-16 school year, we had five appeals and the motion was made by Parker, seconded by Gale, to approve the appeals of cases number 2015-16-3, -4, -5, -6, -7. Five individual students, three families, two of them had two students each, and it was passed unanimously. As far as petition for readmission of an expelled student, that's later on the agenda. And the public employee discipline dismissal, general discussion, but no action taken. Any public comments, Dr. Paz? We'll move on then to item D A, acceptance of donations, September 8th, 2015.
I'd like to move to accept donations for September 8th, 2015, with gratitude.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Consent agenda, any to be taken off? Do I have a motion?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Under discussion, I'd like to make a couple of comments. On item E5, the agreement with Teach, To Teach LLC, I did have communication with Dr. Cash and I'm satisfied with the results of that. If recall, a year ago, my main question, we had a contract in front of us, but no details on what was to be implemented. This time, we have in detail what's going to be implemented, but there's not a similar type of contract, but yet we are voting on that document as the contract outlining exactly what the person is required to do. And that also, my concern last year was, was it a all-inclusive contract where we pay her regardless of what she does or do we get billed as she does things? And I've been assured that we get billed as she does things. On item E8, I just want to comment that the renewed, all the documentation in that is worth all of us reading in detail. Several different reports, discussions, surveys taken, results of those surveys, of what has been done and what will be done at San Marcos, I thought was a very good document to have as a study document. I'd like to just point out, on the calendar on D E9 is the board received the facilities' master plan. As you know, we had a lengthy discussion at the last meeting and this was the result of that discussion, that we're receiving it and that's to be documented in the minutes per that item. The one last one is E11, approval of the ICANN music and art agreements for the 15-16 school year. I just want to say that, you know, yes, it's on the consent calendar, but it is vitally important to the operation of the school district when it comes to math and music and they do a fantastic job and I just want to recognize them for that rather than they just have it on a, it sounds so simple to put it on the consent calendar. That's it. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no public hearing. We'll go on to the action items. Number one, board action on petition for readmission of an expelled student, case number 2014-15-04. Ms. Parker?
In case number 2014-15-04, I move to readmit the student.
Second.
Second by Dr. Paz. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item G2, approval of memorandum of understanding between the district and the California Employees Association and its chapter 37 regarding parageal layoffs and seniority bumping. Do I have a motion?
I would like to make the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the district and the California School Employees Association and its chapter number 37 regarding parageed educator layoffs and seniority bumping.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I've been under the instructions of Dr. Cash that this is not an item we can discuss.
Okay.[748.93][748.93](laughter)
So, I don't, I don't quite understand why, but we can't. Any, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. If you have questions, talk to Dr. Cash. G3, approval of resolution 2015-16 adopting the 2014-15, uh, 16-8, adopting the 2014-15 GAN limit. Dr. Cash?
Ms. Jete has this.
Good evening. In accordance with the California Ed Code, section 42-132, the governing board of each school district shall adopt the resolution to identify the appropriation limit for the district for the current fiscal year and the actual appropriation limit for the district in the preceding fiscal years. This comes to you every single year. It's the GAN limit. I really thought that we would get rid of this during the LCFF, but we haven't. So, it's, it's in the adopt, it's in the unaudited actuals, but we have to specifically have you adopt the resolution.
Motion?
I'll move to approve resolution 2015-16-08.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor say aye. Well, excuse me, any discussion?
I just have one general question. Ms. Jete, how does this compare to past years? We, last year saw a decrease. Can you just tell us, are we at least moving in the right direction or?
Yes, we're moving in the right direction.
Okay, so we're seeing that our borrowing is less than what it used to be when--
Yes.
--I first started grade. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item G4, here you go, Ms. Jete.
Thank you.
Approval of the 14-15 fiscal year unaudited actuals.
First of all, I want to show you this photograph. That's how I know our staff is feeling right now and I'm sure after you read the unaudited actuals, you were feeling the same way. This is from Mary Ziegler. I saw it at the charge and I said, "I've got to have that photograph." It just was so celebratory, so cheer out to Mary Ziegler at DP. So, let's move on to the first page of the estimated actuals versus the unaudited actuals. First of all, I want to say one thing, that as you know, every time we approve a budget or the unaudited actuals, we have to actually show you the Saks, the Saks State Report, which is the big amount of paper that you have behind the narrative. In our haste of putting this together, we omitted the objects, expenditures by object. You now have those. I think they were emailed to you earlier. We have it fixed for the website as soon as, hopefully you'll approve it. That will be posted as tomorrow and there are copies of it in the back. But that is the expenditures by object. What you have in your pamphlet here or your binder is by function. Okay? So, with that being said, our local control funding was really no, our, we're comparing estimated actuals, how we thought we were going to end the year at the adopted budget to when we, what our actuals were, were. And this is not audited by the auditors as of yet. So, in the local control, the funding didn't change very much. Same with federal and state. In our local, we had some one-time reimbursements for the ag turf. That was the pesticides that they put on the sites by accident and we had them reimburse us for that. E-rate, which we got more than we anticipated and we had over 500,000 in foreign exchange students this year. Also, we have a reimbursement for our SIS for legal fees of 65,000.
Mr. Herron?
Yes, Ms. Parker.
Just a quick question. Can you elaborate a little bit on the foreign exchange students? How many students does that represent?
The estimate, Fran, do you know how many? Is that what you--
It is 25 per site and right now we have--
Can we use the mic?
She said 25 per site that we're allowed to have.
It's 25 per site at the high schools. Santa Barbara and Dos Pueblos are maxed out this semester and San Marcos has 24.
So, that's for this year, 15-16. So, we probably had about as many last year. We charged them approximately 13 to come because we've added all the federal, all the, how much it costs to actually take care of a student.
Isn't that an interesting comparison? We've figured out it costs about $13,000 to educate a student and we receive about $8,000.
And can I just ask on that again? When you say that there's a 25-student limit, is that a Ed Code limit?
No, it is not. That's a self-imposed limit that we will not be self-imposing.
Okay. Can have that discussion, yes.
Okay, so let's move on to the expenditures. As you see, there was, our variance on the salaries classified in and employee benefits were minimal. The books and supplies, we typically always budget, like everybody will spend every dime they get and that usually doesn't happen. Services and operating decreases are in the following, conferences, utilities, rentals and repairs, settlement and legal expenditures. We're very proud of that this year. Capital outlay, not as--
Do you have a number approximately of settlements and legal expenditures? What that amounts to, there's a, what there's $3 million difference? Any idea how much of that was settlements and legal expenditures?
Well, what we do is if we had a heavy year, the prior year, we will always budget as if we had that same amount going to happen. And it didn't, it didn't occur. So, we try to adjust it, but until we really know everything that's happening, we leave that alone until the very end. But I know there was a, there was quite a bit of a difference. It was a $3 million between what we estimated and what we closed it and I would say probably about a million of that was settlements. Okay, so for the unrestricted and other finance, not much changed there. We did have more of an inter-district or inter-fund transfer out and that was, basically, we had to give child development about $113,000 this year. Contribution, I'm proud to say, was largely due to the decrease in the special education costs. But what we're, what we're really proud about is on page four with the ending fund balance. We began our fund balance with 7.5 million. We had a net result, a net surplus of four. We have our special reserve fund of 4.8, so that left us with a revised ending fund balance of 16 million and a little bit more. But I just want to, I just want to be really clear about when things fall to fund balance like that. That is fund balance. That is one time. If we eat away at that, it will, it will go away. If we put things towards it that eat, that will go away. So, what we did is we allocated some of the funds to specific areas that the board has shown interest in. And before I get down to the breakout for the general fund assigned of components of ending fund balance, I want to reiterate about SB Bill 858. It was enacted in 2014 and restricts the districts from having a reserve level above 6%. This bill was received with much opposition and in August 2015, Senate Bill 799 was born. The new bill sets the hard cap at 17% of unassigned general fund balances and special reserve funds for most districts. Currently, this bill is in Assembly Rules Committee waiting for referral back to Education Committee for the hearing. Staff will keep you posted. So, for the 14-15 unaudited actuals have resulted in a 2.59% reserve level of which staff has recommended the following assignments. Deferred maintenance to fund our five-to-10-year deferred maintenance plan of 1.5 million. We're looking into an irrevocable trust, so if the board approves that, we would like to put a deposit on that. Cover future deficit for the loss of Prop 30 funds and loss of sales tax. I'm not even sure of, you know, if that will cover that and they are talking and polling people to see how they feel about continuing with Prop 30, so keep your fingers crossed on that. The drought landscaping, stage two, for about 480,000. And then just to try to keep a little bit ahead of the stirs and purrs, we're putting a half a million. It's recommended that we put about a half a million in there, which is a total of 4.4 million. Then we have our special reserve assigned, which is our Fund 17. We always put in there for turf replacement for the San Marcos field so that when it comes due in 10 years and we need $1 million to replace that field, we will have it. It's currently at five, about a half a million. The golf carts and vehicles, we always rotate out by sites and that's a quarter of a million. And then funds to be spent at the discretion of the board is 4 million. And down on, for the unassigned amount, we have revolving cash stores and prepaid expenditures, our 3% reserve, and then we have an additional 3 million of additional reserve, which is
Any questions on that page? Dr. Paz?
This is just an interest question. How often do we go through golf carts and vehicles? How often do we rotate? You don't, if you don't have an answer, it's okay.
No, that's okay. I, we started this a couple of years back because all of our golf carts were not, and our golf carts and vehicles were starting to die and I'd rather, I'd rather plan for them so we have the money in the budget to do it. And we have rotated out, we took an inventory of all of the golf carts and the vehicles about two or three years ago and now we, they're on a recycled. The golf carts last about six years, depending on how they're treated, and our vehicles are about 20 to 25.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. Currently, if, if the rainy day fund gets a dollar, we have to expend everything over 6%. Which line on this would that 6% be allocated from or capped at?
Well, in the, in the SB 858, it states that, it doesn't make it clear that if it's assigned, it doesn't count, but in the SB 799, it's of the unassigned. So, you can assign--
Under the--
--under the new one if it passes--
In the old one, looking at this document, what would be the line item for 6%?
The line item for 6%--
I mean, what would be the--
--would be the 7.1.
The 7.1. Okay. That's a good answer for me. In the, in the 799, where it's a hard cap of 70% of unassigned general fund, what is that 17% related to?
The additional reserve of 3 million and, and probably the funds up in 17 of 4 million.
4 million, so about 7 million also.
So, in other words, you can--
And I, one more third.
I'm sorry.
Our policy in the, that we changed a few meetings ago, said our goal is 10%. What line in here relates to our goal of 10%?
Well, the way I interpret that was the 3% reserve and the additional reserve, and the unassigned additional reserve.
So, again, that would be of the 7 million?
Yeah. Yeah, plus, plus you have to consider Fund 17, which has the 4 million in it. But that's been, well, that hasn't really been assigned. I assigned it that it's at the board's discretion because you, the board said--
Which spent it.
Yeah.
So, really, the 10%, our goal of 10%--
Yep, you're right.
--is on the 7 million, not the 16 million.
That's correct.
So, when we're looking at our goal of 10%, it's the 7 million and-- and the 7, the 7 million, what percentage is that of our--
Total general fund.
Total general fund.
Well, the 3.9 is 3. The 3 is then 6, so that's 6% roughly.
So, we're--
So, we're close. We're, we're like 6 and 1/2% maybe right there.
But we're nowhere near 10%.
That's correct.
So, I don't want any misconceptions that we have a 12.59%, so we're 2.5 over our goal. We're not over our goal.
No, we're not.
Okay, thank you.
And I like the way you're thinking. And if SB Senate Bill 799, it's that unassigned amount of the 3 million down there that can go up to 17%.
Plus the 4 million.
Well, the 4 million up here, we assigned. I just realized that that's been assigned to the board discretion.
But in your documentation, you say 7% of unassigned--
Right.
--general fund balances and special reserve fund 17.
Right, of the unassigned. But this is, the 4 million is assigned. It says reserved assigned. So, if we did, if we unassign that, then it would be part of it.
Okay. Bottom line is, we're not anywhere near our goal.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the unrestricted revenues, the decrease of the result of the property tax transfer to the part of the SLPA funding model, that was a slight decrease. The decrease for the federal was also for the funding model. And the other state increase is due to the mental fund, mental health funding as part of the SLPA funding model. So, it was just a give and take on that funding model. If you've ever seen it, it's quite complex. And then the increase is largely due to the donations and foundation funds. The expenditures are pretty consistent throughout the whole, on the restricted side. The books and supplies, again, we, we budget that everyone spends everything, but that doesn't happen every year, so that rolls over into the next year. And also, the same thing with the service and operating costs. And they were also down in, in the rentals and settlements and legal expenditures also on that side, but due to the decrease of special education costs. So, we had a lower contribution and then we had a, partially to the child development, we had a slight increase there. So, the results of operation were about 286,000 and therefore, we ended with a 3.4 million dollar reserve in our restricted side of the budget. So, that's really the end of my presentation. If anyone has questions? If anyone has questions?
Any questions on the rest of it? Just a question on page 11. Under B7, general administration, the unaudited actuels were 6.6 million, but for our budget, we have 10,300,000, a 55% increase. Is there, is that just an anomaly, or is that just what it turns out to be?
Well, what you're looking at is expenditures by function. So those are in the areas of instruction, pupil services, et cetera. And so it was an error in the function, the way we allocated the general administrative, we used a different function, and we didn't catch it in the beginning of when we were implementing Munus, and we caught it after publication. And so as you see, it's correct in the adopted budget, but we didn't see it in the unaudited actuels.
And that's what you sent us today was...
Yes.
The changes, okay. I think that's all I had. Okay. And this is an action item. Do I have a motion? Dr. Paz.
I would like to make the motion to approve the 2014-15 fiscal year audit and unaudited actuels.
I'll second that.
Under discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. G5, approval of allocation of 300,000 from Measure Q bond funds for the shade structure replacement project at Santa Barbara High School.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As board members are aware, about 10 months ago, the board approved the application for fundraising for the foundation for Santa Barbara High School to complete a project that was long overdue for renovation, and in fact, ended up being demolished for the renovation to occur. As this board and board members are aware, the costs often vary once the division of the state architect gets involved. And so the original estimates for the cost ended up being substantially higher than what was originally thought and approved for by the board. The architect did go through a charrette where they reduced the costs by doing a lot of things, but in the end, the project still has a shortfall. This item is before you in order for the board to consider approving an additional allocation of 300,000 for Measure Q in order to facilitate the completion of the project at Santa Barbara High School. This is one of those projects where we have a very generous member of our community that is raising substantially more than 50% of the cost of the total project in order to see it through its completion. I've asked Mr. Beckio, who is present, and Mr. Hetjung, who's also present, to answer any questions that the board may have in relationship to the project. I can tell you that, that it's a project that needs to be completed, and it's, time is of the essence, and we do have someone willing to come forward from our community to make sure that it gets done.
Dr. Paz?
So just to understand sort of how we got to a point in time where we got a shortfall of 300, almost $300,000, is it more to do with the review by DSA, or is it more to do with the site that we just didn't anticipate? Sort of paint us a picture.
I think it's a combination of things. I mean, what we thought we could actually design and deliver for the original estimate was an actual building, not a pole and canvas type structure that was originally envisioned before our fundraising group and the foundation and Mr. Pelosi stepped in. We'd engage an architect, the architect proceeded with the design, and by the time you get done with DSA and the extra amount of steel and concrete and everything they require for a building to make it as earthquake proof as possible, those costs go up substantially. It's the same with our libraries and everything else. People will say, well, you know, I can build something a lot cheaper. Well, they haven't seen the extent to which the Division of State Architects ensures that these buildings will stay standing during a disaster long after other buildings have fallen down or are not able to be occupied. So it's the same thing. If there's ever an earthquake and you have to be in a building, be in one of the most recent buildings or structures approved by DSA, they are the safest by far. Be in a library, be under the shade structure at Santa Barbara Junior High, be in the shade house when it gets done. It'll be standing. And unfortunately, construction costs have risen in the last two years. The economy is recovering a little bit as far as construction goes, so it's a pyramid of things. You have an architect who probably wasn't 100% familiar with dealing with DSA, and they would come back and make him do to increase the strength and the amount, like I say, concrete and steel in these buildings. It is a beautiful building that will last a number of years, and again, I'm continually excited and pleased by the generosity of this community when it comes to giving to construction projects. I mean, in my 15 years here, I don't know another community that's as generous as this one, including the voters with their bond measures.
Ms. Adelson?
So currently, the structures that was formerly there is demolished, and now we're waiting for approval to continue what needs to be built?
Correct. Basically, the students are dealing with a greenhouse for the year, but no shade house for the other part of the program. So basically, right now, the students are without, I would say, half of what they need for their curriculum and to function and to learn.
Let me just speak to that real quick. So we actually had to cancel our class this year, so we don't have the horticulture class. Just because of the space is not, we're going to have some students try to keep it up, but we weren't able to put the class together because of the space. So I, you know, in terms of, I wanted to speak to you about urgency and opportunity. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for us. Yes, costs have gone up. Opportunity in the sense that, you know, we have a very generous donor for this project, but also for an opportunity for us to create a space that, I mean, this is just a shade structure, it's an outdoor classroom, so, you know, the vision for this is that we have a type of space that gets us to what we all talk about, which is having kids connect with something at school other than academics, and also having an experience where they get real life experience, something that they'll use for the rest of their life. And that's what, we had a vision for that when we designed the shade structure. And so that's the opportunity. The urgency is that we don't have, we're missing kids right now. And, you know, we expected to be done with the project so we could start the school year, and, you know, it has been delayed and et cetera. So I really wanted to impress upon you that, thank you for the opportunity to present to you, and we're asking for your support. It was a Measure Q item originally. It did move down, I think, on the priority list because there were other things, and we had a structure. I think the moment that we had our structure demolished, really mid-year, it, for us, moved up as a very high priority just because of what we know goes on in that space and the potential it has. So, thank you.
Ms. Parker?
So the $300,000 question is, what will not get done with Measure Q funds if we allocate it to this, either at Santa Barbara High or at any of the other secondary schools?
It's not so much technically what won't get done. We've had some projects, three projects, that we were extremely over budget on that did not get completed 100%. If memory serves correct, we were about $1 million short of doing all of the roofing at San Marcos. We were about $1 million short of doing all of the roofing at Galita Valley, and we took money from La Colina's Roofing and allocated it to Galita Valley to get that project done. And Kelly, is Galita Valley about 3.5 million?
3.35.
3.35 million. So basically, nothing would technically not get done because of this, but it would reduce the pool of funds that the board has to allocate later on by 300,000 if they wanted to take leftover Measure Q unassigned money and assign it to one of those other projects. That pool would be reduced. But there's no specific project that will be, that's on the list that wouldn't be done. It's kind of a tough question to answer. I mean, if you asked me that question two years ago, we probably could have answered it precisely by drawing a line. But all of our roofing projects were severely underfunded per the estimated budgets and what the actual costs turned out to be.
Ms. Lamont?
Thank you. Thanks for the update. I think that this is one of the things where we have things that come on to our list, and then they come off, and then there's situations that are not always within our control that make them rise up. I'm generally in favor of this. I know that I actually asked the same question Ms. Parker asked to Dr. Cash, and it was, you know, the same answer as far as there's not one particular thing. And I do think that this is a good public-private partnership. And regrettably, when we're short of funds, those are also the opportunities that we look at. We've talked, you know, long on this board about, well, what happens when there's other projects where we can't find that private partnership, and what does that mean for all of our schools? And I think that that's an ongoing conversation, but I'm generally supportive of it, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
Under discussion? I'll get my turn. I'm not sure where to start. First, Mr. Polisi. You're fantastic.
Better the first time.
You're fantastic. I mean, it's what you do for the community and for our schools in particular, I can't say enough for. That's number one. And number two, once a Don, always a Don. I am a Don, but I take my hat off on this one. You've been at us for exceptions to our policies for the gym, for the Matt Academy, for this, and probably soon to be for Peabody School or Peabody Stadium. What bothers me on this one is more on the staff level, because we accepted in good faith the estimates that were given to us, and I even spoke very highly at the meeting. I went back and watched the video, and I was very encouraged by the project because of things we used in the campaign, that this was an example of what had to be done. So I was very appreciative. I even made the comment when you announced that you were looking for another 250,000 in matching funds. If you remember, I said, you know, this is one thing that if we can help using excess bond funds for, I'd be in favor of it. But that was for the 250,000. That wasn't for the additional 300,000. So I went up, and I go back, why did that ever get to us with an incompetent, I should be careful, with an incompetent estimate that didn't go through our system and say, hey, this guy's off base, he doesn't even know anything about DSA? You let us approve something for 500,000 that evidently, this is just 842, but you went through some system called a veil engineering process, a project shortfall still exists. So it obviously is more than 842 to do what we were told we were going to get when we approved this. And then I Googled veil engineering process, a project shortfall, veil engineering process, and really, according to Wikipedia, it's really a way to reduce costs, shorten the life of something in order to make it do the function that you want it, although it's not the highest of what you want. It just, here's a function, here's what you can get by with, and by the way, according to Wikipedia, it's not going to be the quality that you really want, but it will serve the job for a short period of time, or, you know, I don't know how many years, but it may not be there 100 years. So there's just a lot of things on this that bothers me as far as how we were led to this point, and now, you know, with the Matt Academy, we had a deadline, $500,000, we need it now, use the development funds to do it. The gym was not a project for the first bond issue. It was set up for, to be a second year, the second fund, but based upon a plea, we moved it up. My question then was the same question that you two asked. Okay, for 500,000 additional, what's not going to be done? My question on this, for 300,000, what's not going to be done? You gave a great answer, but I bet if we went to the priority list that we approved, this project wasn't the next line item on it. There might have been other things that 300,000 could cover, and so once again, we're jumping ahead of priority. And, you know, I hear the pleas, and I hope, I'm not going to say, I hope the rest of the board approves it, but I'll be voting no on it out of principle.
Mr. Herron, if I could, you know, to speak to the architect. You can't totally blame the architect, because the architect also gets estimates from outside construction estimators, who, business it is to go through and review plans and give estimates. I think the problem was that we didn't, when you give your initial estimate, you don't have a full set of developed plans and drawings, and as you develop those plans and drawings through the process, sometimes you find out that assumptions that you made, those costs don't hold true, and this item or this requirement costs more than you would have imagined. And some of those things are beyond that architect's control.
So we went from a 17,000 teardown to a fence, to a $500,000 project, of which 355 was construction, and that 355 turned out to be 604. To me, that's huge. And to do it the way it was designed, it was going to be even more than 604. It seems like we have a staff that could have looked at that original budget of 355 and said, you know, to do what they want to do, that's not realistic.
We did. We did exactly that. Here's the issue that we're going to face, and so I'd be glad to take direction from the board after you vote on this. Whenever we are going to be engaged in a public-private partnership for facilities, this will happen unless the board directs the superintendent and this district to only accept money and not input on the design, development, or project for which is being built. Because if that in fact is all we do, is we determine what it's going to be, what it's going to look like, all the parameters in relationship to the design and construction, and simply tell our private partners all's we want from you is money, then this would not occur. We would have gone through our district's process, it would have been the same as any other project we engaged in. We might have escalation costs, or we might have underground costs that no one was aware of, but that's what will happen. But once we, and once as a district, if we're, if we are fully committed to a partnership with private parties, which in this case are our parents, and doing this, and they have input into the development of the project, the design of the project, the specifications of the project, that results in this kind of staggered approach to getting to a point where we have a bottom-line dollar amount. So it would be much easier as an organization to simply tell private parties, thanks for your input, we don't want it, please just write us a check. And I mean, really, that's literally, that would be the cleanest way for you to not be frustrated about what happened.
Ms. Lamont?
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Herron. I think that they're important, and I feel like we've been here before. And one of the things that I've struggled with a little bit has been, you know, when we have these conversations, is this a function of the process or the project? And sometimes it's a combination of both, but one of the things that has sometimes been difficult has been that we've had these discussions about very specific project. So it sometimes feels as though we're taking it out on one project over the other, but I think it's just important to note that we've had, you know, we've been trying to have this conversation. I think that the facilities master plan was one attempt to help us in this process, to think long-term, to think about the use of our existing funds in this particular way. So I just want to say that I appreciate your comments, I understand where you're going from, and it's something that I've struggled with as well. And in the end, I've tried really hard to say, okay, well, you know, how does it relate to this particular project? And I think that it's important to note that we probably still have continued conversations that need to occur in regards to this, in regards to what it means for our district, what we want it to look like for these private-public partnerships. And we're learning, and so I take some of this as we're learning. I do give us as a district credit, like where we started, you know, a few years ago, where I just remember that Excel sheet all over the place, and it kept moving... where I just remember that Excel sheet all over the place, and it kept moving around, and we didn't know where the money was at, and it kept changing. I think we're, we're walking in the right direction to have better clarity, to create a process that doesn't put ourselves in this situation. But I do think that, you know, in this particular case, you know, I'm supportive of the project just because it's already in our books and I'm not, I kind of feel the other way, like ah, if we, you know, we've already said yes to a certain part of it. So I don't want to, and I'm not saying that this is what's happening or by any means, but I just feel that some of this also needs to be part of a different type of conversation. But I appreciate your comments.
Dr. Paz?
I feel, turn it off again. I feel a little bit of the frustration you do because I don't like to have a project go from here to here. It's just a numbers thing for me. It has nothing to do with whether it's supportive of the concept. And very appreciative of private partners who get involved, but I almost feel like we have to get, as a board, a place and time where we have a baseline. This is what we can afford. Anything past that, beyond that, if we get private partners, they could pay for that if they want to. And I think that's kind of where, at least I'm coming from in terms of as a board member because it's hard. It's hard for us as a board, even though we have designated funds for facilities, we are trying to do all the, all the pieces, to actually look at the public and tell them, you know what, we're doing good, we're being good stewards with your money, and, and really look at other parents across the district and say, we hear your concerns. Oh, we understand your concerns with the leaky roof, or having an issue with the air conditioning, especially in these days. Or, you know what, we understand that your kids need water, and we don't have enough drinking fountains, whatever it may be. When we can't face them and have a real good answer for that, it's really challenging as a board. And I think that's where we're at. And it has nothing to do with whether it is a, an issue as a board that's specifically tied to this project. It's just a board discussion that we need, I think we need to really be clear about as a board. Where is it that we want to be? How do we want to deal with these issues as we move forward in the future? And I don't think we're at that place and time where we're all on the same page as board to make sure that we're doing that. And doing it in a really way that's respectful for the public's stewardship and expectation of our funding. And I think that's really important. We need to be really in a, in a good place to be able to do that. And I think that's where it comes from. And so again, Mr. Beck, it has nothing to do with your project. I think as a board, we're having this sort of open discussion. We're all thinking out loud, how do we deal with this in the future?
If I could just comment, I, Mr. Herron, I have not come to you in any disingenuous way with estimates, ever. Those are always just what we have to go on, and I wanted to make sure that you know that, and I do understand your viewpoint. I have come back here and presented to you multiple times for one reason, and that's because, you know, I want the absolute best facilities, the best teachers, I want the best of everything for our kids in our district. And I just happen to be in a position where I influence what happens at Santa Barbara High. And so it is not, I do not come to you because of any other reason except that I know what opportunity this is in front of us to have a space that's going to be incredible for our learning environment. And that's really it. So I apologize that, you know, if you go down the list, the Matt Academy, but you look at those projects and what we've accomplished together is unbelievable for the kids in our community. And I know that happens at each of the school sites, but I did want to make sure that you know that and that you hear from me that I understand your viewpoint as well.
No, I understand, and I didn't mean to challenge your sincerity of what you're doing. I just comment, it's pretty common. And it's not that common with the other high schools. And I'll take, as I said, I took my Don hat off, number one, because my heart's in the project. But, and sorry to say, I hope the rest of the board, you know, uses their heart and votes the way they want to vote. But I don't want to influence anybody in that. But, but I just, I have a problem, and again, I still not convinced that the staff couldn't have looked at the project and said, gee, $355,000 for this project. And we've got Telukoo we pay a lot of money to, and Dr. Hett Young we pay a lot of money to, and other staff, that somebody could have said, that's not a realistic number.
We did.
Not us, I don't think.
No, we didn't, but we did. It goes, it, Mr. Herron, I'm afraid you're going to face this in every private-public partnership we have.
But we were asked to vote on it.
Correct.
Under a certain set of assumptions.
And then those assumptions changed, and that's what brought forth what you have before you now.
But it changed, I presume, after we voted on it.
Correct. It did.
And so then it went down the path, okay, now we're going to go full bore, and it turns out, it might have been 400 or 500,000 more money, but we don't hear about it until we're asked to vote on it. We have a public comment. So, Ms. Parker?
I want to be careful when we're talking about cost overruns on a construction project, that we don't over-focus on this being a leveraged situation with a private-public partnership because in almost every construction project we do, we have cost overruns. When it's just a public, public-only us, we have cost overruns. And sometimes they're really dramatic, and sometimes it's for reasons that maybe we should have predicted, but a lot of times it's stuff we don't know. But we have cost overruns. And so I expect the cost overruns piece. What I find hard, what we've always found hard, is when we're looking at it and it feels like this is just isolated, and that we're not looking at it as part of the big picture because we know that you're looking at it in facilities as part of the big picture, but, you know, we, we see the pieces of it, and it's just, it's been a while since we've seen the Measure Q spending in a, in a way that we're just looking at the Measure Q spending. And so it just feels a little bit disjointed. And so, not to affect the vote on this particular project, I would say that, you know, the next time cost overruns come forward on any project, that we're just, we're seeing it in context, that we just get some document with it that says, this is where we are on Measure Q, or this is where we are on Measure R, and this is why this is a priority over all the other things on there. You know, just to see it in context. We struggle, we try putting in, you know, we have board policy on fundraising for facilities. It is so hard when we're trying to leverage for this because it's such an awesome opportunity with Mr. Pulice and the Pulice family. But we just need to see it as part of the bigger picture. And, you know, the reality is, for projects at our other schools, we've had cost overruns. So I just want to be sure that we're looking at it, and I'm also looking at it in the sense of parity because that's an important piece of the board policy. And what I've discovered is, as much as we'd like to do parity, the schools are all so dang different from each other that it's hard because there is no other school that has that particular kind of a building on it that's going on at Santa Barbara High. But the other schools have their own unique buildings that nobody else has as well. So it's just, it's just a challenge for us.
We've been very fortunate in the last couple of years, going the least-lease basis. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hett Young, but our cost overruns have been, or change orders have been very minimum the last couple of years compared to the first three years, four years I was on the board, we were getting them every week. But we had, we don't have a lot of, we didn't have a lot of trouble the last couple of years on change orders.
Correct, because change orders were limited to discovery items of things that you found that were unknown, not due to any errors and omissions or conflict within the plans, which kind of opens the checkbook a lot of times when you're held hostage to, this is my price, take it or leave it to do the work.
Board, is it okay for Mr. Pulci to comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, thank you. I'm very grateful for the work you all do. You know, it's, you're all volunteers on the board, and it's gracious to see. And we, I, sometimes I wish our board of supervisors was as talented as this board, but don't quote me on that. But you guys do a great job. And I just want to say just a few things. You know, I've been in construction, I was involved in a construction company that I owned and ran for 45 years. I'm, you know, I'm in my upper 60s. And so I've done this a lot, and I've, I've seen overruns, I've seen projects that get out of hand. But there's, there's a process that you have going on that actually causes this to happen. You, you will, there's, there's two or three factors, and DSA is a huge factor. If you don't know what they're going to come up with, you know, until after we ask for your $500,000 or whatever money we ask for a budget, I've seen this project, I looked at it, I've spent, you know, a lot of hours, and Kelly's done a great job working with me as well, and I'm working with him actually. But the fact of it is, is that we tried very hard to make this as cost-effective as possible. I don't think we could have made it any cheaper than how they forced us to build it. This project is way overbuilt from a structural concrete perspective. I mean, I've built many bridges that don't have the substructure that this thing has. I mean, bridges over Colorado River, major rivers, and I see this, I go, how can you do this? Well, I can't change DSA. And it's, you know, it is there for a reason. They, and, but they, but they're their own shop. They decide what they want to decide, and there's no arguing. There's no, there's no comments, basically. You just have to do as it asks. This project was well over a million dollars. So we said, how do we convince them otherwise? And so we came back with a different substructure, and they said, okay, we'll do it that way. But it was like pulling teeth to get it down to even this number. We've really been sweating and trying very hard to get it to where it is. You know, Stacy is not here, and myself, you know, we're going to donate a half million dollars. We have only asked two friends to help out in the total of 40 more thousand. So we, we don't want to ask for more money from our, from the other parents because we don't know whether it's going to be built yet. It's, you know, we've spent $60,000 so far in a lot of sweat and anguish getting it to this point, but we're ready to do it, we will do it, I mean, and we'll put the money up. But I'm not going to be here forever. UCSB, my kids, I had 10 years at UCS, at Santa Barbara High. I got them all over the place, and the last ones at UCSB, and I guarantee you, they're asking for help. You know, and, you know, but I've been in construction all my life, and I've seen Peabody Stadium, you know, and the issues that are there. And it's, it's really, rather, we're in over our head in some of our projects. Sometimes we don't have the expertise necessary to come up with numbers that are actually very accurate. And I take exception to the lease-leaseback. I like it from a construction management perspective, but you don't always get the best price. But you stay away from too cheap of a price that causes you more grief in a lawsuit later. So there's good and bad with the lease-leaseback. I think we'll, now we're going to bid this thing out. We just hope that the contractor who gets it is talented enough to build it for a reasonable price. But anyway, the process, we do these things where DSA gets their hands, emits in it after you guys approve the $500,000. I'm sorry that happened, but there was, and I don't think it's because we overdesigned it. I just think that it was actually a substructure, had nothing to do with what we were doing. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion passes, vote of one. Item G6, approval of oversight committee renewals.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Ms. Kiani will bring forward the names of the citizens that we can thank for their service to our school district.
We have three committees that have individuals who are cycling off. They've had two-year terms, and these individuals have been kind enough to say that they're willing to sign up again. So it's the Measure A, 2012 Parcel Tax Oversight Committee, the Measure Q, 2010 Bond Oversight Committee, and the Measure R, 2010 Bond Oversight Committee. I have, in the memo that I prepared for the board, I listed the three committees, and then I listed the recommendations to approve. And I don't know if you'd like to have me just read the list of names for all the committees, you know, each group, and then take a vote, or if you want to do the vote after each set of names for the, in other words, the first...
Just read them all?
Yeah.
Read them all, and we'll give you one motion.
Okay. For Measure A, 2012 Parcel Tax, Lay, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing this correctly, Sly, he's representing the Senior Citizens Group. His term expires in September. Measure Q, 2010 Bond Oversight Committee, we have Cindy Young, who's a parent PTA representative. Her term expires August 2015. James Baker, Senior Citizens Group Representative, two-year term, expires August 2015. Robert Vitamonte, Business Representative, two-year term, expired 2015. Joaquin Becetta, Tax Prepare Representative, two-year term, expired August 2015. And the final committee is Measure R, 2010 Bond Oversight, and the two representatives there, the first one is Gary Levin, Parent PTA Representative, two-year term, expired August 2015. And then Juan Becetta, again, Parent Representative, two-year term, expired August 2015.
Do you have a motion? Ms. Parker?
I'll move to approve the Oversight Committee Renewals and ask us a quick question. Is it James Baker for the Senior Citizens Group, or is it James Baxter?
Oh, I have Baxter on there. I don't have the original application.
Okay, as long as it's Baxter. Because you said Baker, so I...
Oh, I'm sorry. Baxter is what I've written down.
Okay. I'll second it.
Seconded by Adelson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And on G7, the approval of Oversight Committee Term Completions.
And we have two individuals who have served two consecutive terms, which is what they're permitted per the rules of the committees. And this is for Measure 2010 Bond Oversight Committee for our elementary schools. And the two individuals are Ann Fitzgerald, Senior Citizens Group Representative, and Joseph Bailey, Business Representative. Both of their terms expired 2015.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve the Oversight Committee Term Completions with much gratitude and a suggestion that maybe they would like to go on to a different Oversight Committee.
I have thought about that.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Conference item one, Superintendent will report on the opening week of the 2015-16 school year.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We had an exciting first nine days of school up to this point, with lots of great things happening. Been out to almost every campus so far to see what's happening in the classrooms, and particularly on the first day of school, it was incredible to see kids already at work, classroom cultures being created. It was really, it was quite phenomenal to see the great work that our teachers were engaged in. We still have quite a bit of work left in the remaining 10 days to ensure that our schools are adequately staffed and balanced. We have the following enrollment to report to you. At Adams Elementary School, 556 total students. At Cleveland, 373. At Franklin, 579. At Harding, 418. At McKinley, 423. At Monroe, 482. At OAS, 133. At Roosevelt, 599. At Santa Barbara Community Academy, 300. At Washington Elementary School, 602. At Galita Valley Junior High School, 791. At La Colina, 943. At La Cumbra, 437. And at Santa Barbara Junior, 747. At Dos Pueblos, 2,162 students. At San Marcos, 2,196 students. At Santa Barbara, 2,212 students. At Alta Vista, 163 students. And at La Cuesta, 117 students. For a total of, with our non-charters, of 14,233 students. I'm really happy also to report that our first late start and early release days went off very well with teachers getting great work done to prepare and start the school year, and that our first professional learning days will be coming up shortly where we'll have our teachers be able to meet across the district in the professional learning communities. It's been a superlative opening of school. The only negative has to be the weather. It's unfortunate that it's so hot, and we, we know that our teachers and our principals and all of our staff are doing everything possible to make the conditions conducive to learning throughout the days that we've had and the days ahead. We'll just hope that it cools down a bit. As board members are aware, they are predicting an El Nino, and we have been preparing for that possibility for the past several months. And we'll have an extensive briefing and training on what to do at our first... And we'll have an extensive briefing and training on what to do at our first principal leadership team meeting this week on Thursday. And that concludes the opening report.
Questions for Dr. Cash? Ms. Limone?
So, interesting. Speaking of El Nino and facilities, I mean, I'm guessing that that also includes, it's part of the conversation of readiness-
Yeah, oh, yes.
With our facilities and-
Yep. Cleaning the gutters, where the sandbags are, all of that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you for having a great opening week. That's, we can't ask for anything more than that, and my email has been pretty slight, and whatever else is, but that's always a good sign.
You just stink yourself.
H two, first reading of SBTA Initial Proposal for 2015-16 Collective Bargaining.
So this matter is just for you, your acceptance and review.
Any questions? As a conference item, so if none, I hear none, we'll go on to H four, Precession of Light Sale Literacy Program.
With that, we'd like to call Dr. Ramirez to the podium. Your first three, which is a-
H three?
Internal program evaluation.
Oh, okay. I had Pedro down on that. H three, Internal Program Evaluation Process.
So it asks Dr. Guillermo Wan to come forward.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Dr. Cash, Cabinet. I'm here just to discuss an interim process that I developed last spring regarding how our district will move forward with internal program evaluation to both support resource allocation and to support the practices in our schools. So I'd first just like to say that it's in response to district in-site express need for this, and that the process, I plan to have it in place for this, this school year, and I am planning to develop an evaluation committee that will, in part, look into potential procurement of formal evaluation models if we deem that that is a necessary step. So we'll sort of informally pilot this process this year while looking at other options. So I'd like to first discuss the process. It's really designed to be ground up and go through a cycle that will allow for peer feedback. It will also ensure that principal teams become aware of the work done across sites within their grade span. So you'll see here, I don't want to go through it step by step, but essentially, the school or the district administrator that's in charge of a particular program that they planned to pilot will fill out a form that I can talk a little bit about next, and that would be brought to their respective assistant superintendent. It would then go to the principal committees for elementary and secondary. Then I would look at it for sound research design. We would talk with education technology services to ensure that whatever technology is being proposed or needed, or if there's data that needs to be generated that doesn't already exist, that everything is compatible with our systems and address those needs. And then bring it, bring it back to Cabinet. And if there is an MOU or some sort of formal agreement that needs to be made, then those would be made at that point, and those that need to be brought to the board will be brought to the board. So that's essentially the cycle that we're going through, and we've had a few come through. And actually, the light sale that you're about to hear is in the midst of this process as well. So we don't really need to look at the actual, that's why you can move this up or you can take it down. So the template, I know we don't usually look at forms in board meetings, but I wanted to provide that just so that you can see the type of information that I'm directing our administrators to think about, to process, the questions that they're being asked. There are really four areas. The first is goal, are the goals the objectives and the indicators? And this really has to do with aligning our programs to our LCAP and our single plans for student achievement, and ensuring that the programs that we are looking into, the programs that we are piloting, have a clear purpose that is aligned to our district goals, to our strategic plan. There's another section on program information, so activities and cost and the one following it. This really gets at that question of what did we do, for who, with who? And outlining the costs associated, looking at the resource allocation that is implicated by whatever the program is. The third set of questions has to do with developing guiding questions that are related back to the indicators, identifying the data sources and how they will analyze the data. And this really gets at a question that Dr. Paz has talked about as well, is, you know, how well have we done what we say we're going to do? And then is anyone better off? How will we know that? And then the last section is really about implications, both for practice and for resource allocation in particular. I think that concludes my summary, and if you have any comments or feedback, I'd welcome it at this time.
Pedro, Dr. Cash.
It's got 10 minutes to wait. Not that late yet.
Dr. Paz.
I had one comment. I know that you're also looking at sort of where you're, how you gather information. That's on page three of the five pages of the form. And my question or comment is more to do with when you look at survey or other, one of the things that I would ask that maybe perhaps you could include there, something to do with whether their survey or tool is a valid, reliable tool. Is it, is it an evidence-based tool? Is it already been proven to be effective at measuring whatever they're hoping to measure? Or is a survey sort of a homebrewed survey? And that, for me, is not necessarily the same sort of realm where I'm thinking about in terms of evaluation research, as opposed to just looking at a program and you want to, or you're curious about something. So I would try to separate them out from those that meet that standard to those who don't, and maybe looking at other tools out there. And that is a cost, and sometimes when you're looking at valid and reliable tools and people have done that, they're, they sell them, and there's a cost. So that also plays into whether something gets approved or not. So that would be my suggestion, at least.
Thank you.
Ms. Limone?
So I have a general question, and I actually thank you for including the form because it was the form that prompted this question. Do you have any parameters around what an internal program is? I mean, is there a definition? Like, how would one know, "I have a program, and therefore I should go through this process" versus "I'm just informally doing something"?
I think right now we've left it a little bit vague on purpose, and it originally started out as internal program evaluation, us as Santa Barbara Unified Staff looking at our own work that we are doing versus an external party or an academic researcher coming to do an evaluation or academic research. So I can say that it organically developed in that way. But I think the evaluation committee this year, that should be one thing, thank you for bringing it up, that we should look at in terms of, you know, what is something that needs to go through this process, and what is something that perhaps doesn't. And we've had some informal conversations around that, and I think that you bring up a good point that we should, we should continue to look into.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
I really appreciate this too, Dr. Guillermo Wan. And one question I have is for this flow chart, especially in looking at it in conjunction with the form. One of the things that I, I just so appreciate this because we have started so many programs in the past, and we've just started them. The reality is that we have continued them without any evidence of success. And I feel like we have programs and interventions in place that probably actually harm students, and we are just letting them go on. And so for that, and just to give, to make everybody aware and keep in the forefront of their mind, I think it'd be great if this were actually the evaluation approval and continuation flow chart, or some other term there, so that we visually close the loop right here at the very start of a process, so that you talk in the form. There's the expression of, you know, "What do you expect? What are your goals? When do you know you've reached those? What will you do if you don't meet those goals?" This is where it needs to say, I think, as, when anybody is thinking about doing something, at the end of this process, based on, you know, whatever date it is, does this continue? Yes or no? Does it expand? Yes or no? And we really, I think it's important right from the get-go, and this is why I so appreciate what you're creating here. You know, you don't start a program willy-nilly. You also don't continue a program that doesn't work. And I think we really need to make that explicit, and honestly, you know, we need to make that a practice here. There are so many things that we're not looking at. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to comment, we are looking at those things.
Good.
And it is a highly politicized process that we're engaged in. This is the first time in our district's history that we have a process like this. Five years ago, there was nothing like this in place.
Yep.
And even the process of generating this evaluation process has been highly political with our site administrators. So I want to thank Dr. Guillermo Wan for listening to me vent probably in multiple cabinet meetings about various things happening at schools with no evidence to support their effectiveness, and putting together a process that will allow us to engage in that. We are currently in the midst of evaluating, I'll say, several dozen programs and projects that are happening in our district that have been happening, some for years. And you will see those results.
And just to follow up on what I was saying, I mean, I totally get that because it's personnel, it's purchasing, it's the money that we've spent on things over our years that, it's our heart and soul, you know, communities believe that this was the right thing for students. And so I totally get that it is, you know, rocking a world and very distressing sometimes to think, you know, either that I actually wasn't doing something that was helpful or that I need to stop this. And so I appreciate it. I understand that it's a challenge for all of you, and it would ultimately be a huge challenge for us. So, thank you.
Dr. Paz.
And just to expand on that, and that was my earlier comment of looking at it in the space models. You don't have to prove that they work, someone already did the work for it. And I think that's one sort of recommendation as a board member and someone even outside. Investing in that is a better investment than, "Oh, I came up with something. Well, how do you know it works?", right? And I think that, to Ms. Parker's comment, I think she's absolutely correct. I mean, it's one of the pieces that I always look at is, we, in my own work, we don't invest in programs that don't show you're being effective, that you're making a difference in a child's life. And I think when you look at starting off a program, you don't modify it as you continue to do it. You modify it at the end of the cycle. You let it go its course. And then there is the point in time where if it's not showing to be effective, you're either going to propose to change it in a way that does, or you get rid of it. And I think for us as a board, or me in particular as a board member, you know, I appreciate this. I see it as a step in the right direction. We do need to continue to kind of look at this forum and say, you know, can we change it? What have we learned? Maybe a year from now, you'll learn more and say, "You know what? We really should have put this in there. This process should have included that in the process." So I do appreciate it, and thank you so much for the work.
Thank you, and I just want to express my gratitude for your support as our district is moving to evidence-based decision-making and developing capacity to do our own program evaluation internally amongst our site administrators and district administrators. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public here to talk about light sale literacy program? If not, I'd like to jump to item H five. We've got three coaches back there that probably want to get home, so can you go right into the item H five, Discussion of Santa Barbara Unified School District's Compliance with Title Nine of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and 1974, also known as the Patsy Mink Equal Opportunity in Education Act 2002.
Thank you, Mr. Herron. I just have to say, though, in correction, that if these athletic directors get home before nine o'clock, their wives are going to wonder what's going on. So they never are home before nine o'clock on a school night, so, but I'm sure they're very thankful.
So we need to have them back here more often.
Dr. Draughty.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Good evening, Governor and Board, Mr. Herron. As you already know, San Marcos High School underwent an Office of Civil Rights review of their athletic program to assess whether they were compliant with Title Nine of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and 1972. The OCR office found San Marcos High School compliant in their assessment. The Santa Barbara Unified School District found the process to be very valuable and conducted its own review of Dos Pueblos High School and Santa Barbara High. Using the same criteria, the district determined that the two high schools would have been compliant as well. In this presentation, I will be presenting information about what we learned in the process, in the review process from Title Nine. And also, I've invited the three athletic directors, Mr. Dan Feldhouse, Abe Jaharmi, and also Joe Chenoweth, to help answer any questions regarding our process. So I think the first thing we have to establish is the definition for what Title Nine is. And I'm not going to insult your intelligence, but reading it, but maybe we'll take a second to just read what it is. And basically, it is not to discriminate in terms of sex when we're implementing our athletic programs if we are receiving funding from the federal government, in a nutshell. OCR looks at three aspects of an athletic program when determining compliance. The athletic interests and abilities of male and female students must be effectively accommodated is the first standard. The second standard is that the assistance must be available, financial assistance must be available on a substantially proportional basis to the number of male and female participants in the institution's athletic program. And lastly, male and female athletes must receive equivalent treatment, benefits, and opportunities with respect to 11 programs, program components, which are equipment and supplies, games and practice times, travel and per diem, coaching and academic tutoring, assignment and compensation of coaches and tutors, locker rooms, and practice and competitive facilities, medical or training facilities, publicity, recruitment, and also support services.
Can you describe the three-part test and the 1% rule?
Yes, I was gonna, the three-part test and 1% rule, I was going to get to more details of that-
Okay.
-in the presentation. It's a complex system, so I wanted to go in order so that way it's pretty clear for you and also the public as well. So compliance will be assessed in any one of the following ways. One is whether participation, whether participation opportunities for male and female students are provided in numbers substantially proportionate to their respective enrollment. Okay, that's part one. The second part is, in the case where the members of the one sex have been and are underrepresented among the athletes, it will be whether the institution can show a history and continuing practice of program expansion which is demonstrably responsive to the developing interests and abilities of the members of that sex. So that's under, what I just read was under compliance with the second test. And the last test for compliance is, in the case where the numbers of one sex are underrepresented, which is test one, among the athletes, and the institution cannot show a continuing practice of program expansion, it will be whether it can be demonstrated that the interests and abilities of members of the sex have been fully and effectively accommodated by the present program. So we underwent three, basically, tests in our review of this. Under part one, we basically just looked at the numbers of students in our schools that are male and female, and compared it to the number of students that are in programs that were divided as sports that are predominantly male versus female. And- And from there, determination then is made to see whether we're compliant or not. If, in a sense, if that does not work, you go to test number two, which is looking at the history of expansion. Our compliance was based on part three, which is that we are engaged in serving all of our students. And if you're wondering how that is determining whether we're actually meeting the needs of the students, it has to do with us having the ability to survey, survey the programs that exist out there that our students could be involved in, such as the girls' programs. If you take an example of lacrosse, we have a very vibrant lacrosse program right now that we underwent. But we forced the issue when community members came to us and said that they wanted a males' program. And we came back and said, in order to have a males' program, we need to make sure that we have a females' program. So, in that work, we surveyed whether our students were interested in the program, in which they indicated that they were. We also surveyed whether opportunity exists for competition to exist in our region, which we determined they were. As a result, we instituted a program, which now we have lacrosse team, a CIF sanctioned lacrosse team for boys and the girls. Had we turned, had we not included the females in that, we probably would, that would have been a finding in part three of the test. But, so, in terms of, so, as I mentioned, we thought the process is very valuable as we went through San Marcos. The OCR office was very satisfied with what they saw in San Marcos. They thanked us for our willingness to be open and having honest conversations regarding athletics programs. But we, under Dr. Cash's leadership, he wanted us to go through the same process with Dos Pueblos High School and Santa Barbara High. And so, we engaged in looking at the same numbers and the same processes that we had for San Marcos. So, we determined that we would have been compliant. I have the three A.D.s here, and I'll leave it up for questions for you to ask.
Since they're here, do they have any comments? I know the acquisitive back there, they usually earn a lack of words.
Why don't you come up here, Mr. Jaharmi?
We went through the process at San Marcos, and at first, it was really annoying because we didn't think it was, we knew it was a bogus complaint. But, when we went through the process, we really appreciated all the things that we do and how in compliant we were. I mean, they came out there, interviewed every single coach, every single, the custodians, the gardeners, the equipment managers, Dr. Drati, Ed Behrens, Jen, myself, and then three kids from every single team. And they were, by the second, it was a three-day process, by the second day, you could just tell they were just so impressed with our schools. And so, it's not only San Marcos. I speak for all our schools. We're exactly the same. The entire district is the same. And so, you know, we do the best we can for our students, all our students. And I appreciate Dr. Cash's support and Dr. Drati's support through this process. But we ended up really appreciating it, and we really learned a lot about ourselves.
Thank you. Joe, any?
I think he's saying it well.
Okay.
It's a good process.
Ms. Parker.
Thank you. And I, like you, ultimately was really pleased that it ended up that we had this because it is so easy, I think, to lose perspective or have that just be, you know, something that you have to do, but you're not really paying close attention to. And I think it helped us refocus. And so, one of my questions is, because to me, the big behemoth is always football. It's a boy's sport. It's a lot of athletes that participate in it, and it's very expensive. So, how do the schools, well, first of all, I'm assuming since it went to essentially part three, I'm assuming that there are more male athletes than female athletes. Is that true at all, the high schools?
Yes.
Okay. And probably football is a big reason why that is so. So, how do you sort of balance out, how do you encourage girls in different sports and other sports? And I don't know if that's a Dr. Drati question or an A.D. question, but how do you encourage that and how do you support that?
I think the easiest example would be what we had to do for lacrosse. And as I mentioned earlier, community members came here and very excited about having lacrosse here in our schools. And most of them were male, were fathers that wanted their sons to play lacrosse, have the experience of having lacrosse. So, their perspective was in providing that experience for us. So, we looked at it, we were interested in it, but our interest was, since we recognized that lacrosse is not just a boy's sport, and it's actually, you can have a females' lacrosse team as well. And in fact, the universities, at this point right now, would encourage girls, because that's one of their programs that a lot of female students get scholarships in, we wanted to make sure that we had both. So, the question came, well, initially, the boys were more interested because of the community members that were engaged in this process. We needed to create a support structure and informational at the junior high level to encourage the girls to at least mess around with the program and get involved with intramurals. As a result, we really pumped that, advertised that. Because of that experience, a lot of them went on to the high schools. And all of a sudden, now they're, the A.D.s will attest to you that it's more vibrant than the boys' programs.
I appreciate that as a mother of a young junior high female lacrosse player.
If I may, I want to make sure all the board understands that if we didn't have football on our three high schools, we might not have any other sport. Football pays for most of the other sports through the revenue it generates, through game ticket sales and concession sales. It literally pays for probably almost every, because most of the sports are non-revenue generating. Football is not. So, while it is an expensive sport, it's, all of its costs are covered, and it pays for the opportunity for athletes in other sports.
Thank you.
May I add to something that was very interesting to us in our meetings with Title IX, and Dr. Cash was in the room when we asked these questions? When we went over the three different tests, it is very easy to focus on test number one to try to make this proportionate. And a lot of times, that will mean that you would have to drop certain sports in order for that to, for us to be successful in meeting that. There are going to be other sports like football that may have 100 students compared to a basketball team that has. So, how many programs would you have to say drop in the boys in order to match the numbers with the girls? So, unfortunately, a lot of universities go take that route. But because of test number three, this doesn't force us to be proportionate in terms of numbers, but it does force us to really look into the programs that exist out there that we need to go after if our students are interested. So, we just...
I'm sorry. And the numbers are going to get a little more even too, because what Title IX also found with all three of...
Mr. Jaharmi, yeah.
I'm sorry. What Title IX also found with all three of our schools is that we encourage, as long as there's competition, there's interest, we encourage kids to participate. And so, with the numbers coming up, for example, girls' sand volleyball. Girls who are interested in it, there was competition for the girls, and so, we started a girls' sand volleyball program, even though it's not CIF. Eventually, it will be a CIF sport way before the boys are, and so, that'll be more numbers. And within the next two years, numbers that we're not counting are cheer and marquets. That's going to be a CIF sport. And then, all of a sudden, in a place like, you know, some of our schools now, we've got, you know, 30, 40, 50 kids in cheer. And so, those numbers will be coming up too. So, they were impressed that we didn't discourage any girls' programs or any programs for that matter into, you know, coming along. But those are two more sports that both, all three of our schools have decided to add.
I was in the room with the lawyers and asked a lot of tough questions about our programs. I asked probably, Dan, Abe, you were, Joe, I don't know if you were there, maybe you were at a different one, but I asked a ton of hypotheticals. If we do this, if we have people that come forward with this, if this happens, if this, I mean, just probably 15, 20 hypotheticals, because I'm old enough to know that many of those things may happen. And they were, they kept coming back to what Mr. Jaharmi just said, and that is the fact that we have had a consistent history of this district for years of when an interest arises, finding a way to meet that, those students' interest in fielding a team. And they even went back to the fact that our district was the first district in California that had girls' water polo.
Ms. Adelson.
And as far as co-ed sports, because I'm curious, I mean, obviously, we designate some things as boys or girls. And I know that's, has caught my eye just in terms of the kids' transcripts. I have a son who plays baseball, and it says baseball B. I finally learned that B is for boys. But I wonder, except for maybe cross country or track, are there other sports that we can have? And swimming, okay.
Swimming.
Tennis.
Tennis, yeah.
Wrestling.
Okay.
Basketball, soccer.
So, those things are allowed to be, so, okay.
We need to be very careful with that because we can on paper say it's co-ed, but I think they warned us about overusing that if predominantly, if it's predominantly a male sport.
That's a hypothetical I asked about football. I said, so, how many girls would we need to have on the football team to have it truly be considered a co-ed sport? And the answer was, it will depend on how many you've had. I said, well, what if we had one at one high school three years ago? And that's when he cautioned us and said, then I would not call that a co-ed sport. Even though girls are eligible and encouraged to come out and play.
Ms. Moon.
Thank you. So, first, I have to say that I appreciate you coming because I always know that when you come, you will be sporting the school that you go to. I think it's great. So, I just, yes, all the time. I would wear it. I would wear it. So, but the question I have, I've heard the term compliance used a lot, but it also sounds that if you take away, I think it was part one, which was the number for number, but if you look at part two and part three, it discusses other areas. And I'm actually wondering if anything came out of this process. You talked a little bit about the process and how informative it was, not just to be compliant, but to raise the bar. And you've given some examples of, look, we're really, you know, when new programs are coming in, we want to see if there's opportunities for two. You talked about scholarship opportunities, but is there any other learning kind of in this process and going through this that just helps us as a district raise that bar, not just be compliant?
I think what you bring up is much bigger than just the Title IX. And this really has to do with, and I'm glad you guys, as a board, have understood that being culturally proficient is one of our main important goals here. And we never want to tokenize any program or process or anything like that. So, when we came and, when they came with this issue, I think everybody took it to heart. And that's how we appreciated the process so much. It wasn't about Title IX coming in and finding something. If they were going to find something, we would accept the responsibility to address it because we wanted things fair for our students. We want to support all of our students. So, yeah.
And that's really their language.
Yes.
I mean, I said, I mean, the guy was just gushing with us. And I said, so, can, do we get like a gold star? He said, no, you're either compliant or not compliant. And I said, okay.
I could also comment in some areas where it caused us to examine what we're doing. For example, with gym time, making sure that the girls are, have the equal access to the times that they need or that they want also for their practices, for basketball, for example. Facilities, it challenges to look at our facilities and things that we used to call, just, our schools are getting up there in years. We just got to examine what we're doing with our facilities as well. And even some of our, like, using our stadium, make sure the girls' soccer team and the boys' soccer team both have equal access. And we do, but it's just because it was a great reminder to make sure that we are vigilant about making sure those things are equal and all those things. So, that's a...
Thanks.
And we also have two female football players, one on varsity and one on freshmen too, so, this year.
Okay. Magali, thank you very much. We always enjoy when you guys come. It adds a little bit to our meeting, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck Friday night. Be safe.
And be successful.
Yes.
Orioles.
That would be true in Clovis, the Orioles.
Presentation of light sale literacy program, number H4.
Would like Dr. Ramirez to come forward.
Hi, good evening, Board, Board President, Mr. Heron. I'm here to present on a pilot that we're looking at engaging in this year. And wanted to just be able to bring it to your attention, be able to answer any questions you may have. And I'll start, and you were in the Board Agenda. You would see the presentation, and we also included something from the vendor with more details, just because in the interest of time, it was something very important for you to have, and some of those may be questions that can be maybe self-explanatory or answered throughout, but I'd be more than glad to review them. So, in terms of a light sale, and I took this basically from that document, cloud-based digital literacy solution that looks at practices of good or sound reading instruction and streamlines them into an app. And it is an app that is, that is very user-friendly. Obviously, we were interested in students being the ones driving the approach, teachers and students. So, we wanted to something that was fairly easy to use as we kind of begin to talk about what it does. And what it does is that it begins to answer a question that I think over the coming, not just this year, but in the future, we'll have to investigate much further, which is digital literacy. And this is our first, maybe tiptoe into, into digital literacy as a function of, as a formal function of what we do. So, this is, this is an opportunity to begin to build out a more robust library of books, of eBooks or of online books that can be accessed by students at any place, essentially, is what we'd like to eventually be able to examine. Also, part of this is that there are embedded formative assessments, and the genuine texts are the texts themselves. So, there are, there is the ability to gauge a great deal of information and gather a great deal of information from students as they, in real time, if you will, as they read, as they interact with the text. Also, and that brings me to the next point, which is monitoring reading activity and comprehension. So, there are embedded, again, going back to the notion of embedded assessments, there are checkpoints along the way that begin to monitor the way in which students interact with the text. And some of them are just a function of the format of the app itself. Finally, it continues to provide independence for students. And what that means is that now, it provides more opportunities for students to be able to interact, not just during school time or after-school time, but at home in the weekends, at times that are more available for students that really work around their schedule and their family's schedule. So, we talked about kind of an initial overview of an implementation plan. And what we're looking at is, this really started this past spring with initial conversations with our school sites. And in that conversation or in those dialogues, we had McKinley, Dr. Mora, when she was principal of McKinley, who demonstrated an interest in moving forward, being that McKinley had already and had further plans to move forward with additional purchase of iPads in the upper grades. And after a number of conversations there, we ventured out to meeting with the fourth grade team. And two teachers volunteered to look at the program a little more closely or the software a little more closely, Ms. Tracy Schifferns and Heather Volz. So, that fourth grade team really took an interest and was more, was more open to the idea of using it as part of their instruction and seeing how it could work for them. Throughout the summer, we discussed what that rollout could look like and what that would entail. And so, the licenses are free of charge at this point for us to pilot and to begin to make some sense of the program, the purchase of the online books. Those we keep, so we would be investing in the purchase of books, but those regardless of whether we continue with... we continue with this particular program or not, they will help build out our library as a as a as really a district. And and what we're looking to do is, again, looking at digital books that also align to our instructional program. So we have a number of titles and selections that we identified district-wide and made commitments to district-wide. And so this this is very much in line with that, where there would be a digital version of that as part of the program. So the intent there is to look at using those resources in the classroom as much as looking at reading habits and what what might come with students interacting with other texts in their independent reading time. So again, throughout the fall, we're looking at our tech coaches being able to begin to provide support to teachers on an as-needed basis. Again, it's two teachers at McKinley, fourth grade teachers. So we're looking at any any kind of troubleshooting or how to embed the 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 use of the of the program as part of their as part of their regular daily instruction. In addition to that, we're looking at site visits, now talking to Mr. Hendel, and communicating with with the staff to 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 measure the that effectiveness, to see how it's being implemented, what what some of the initial challenges might be, and and looking at how students are interacting with digital text. That's that's really a big a big piece, because we want to acknowledge that some of that it may not may not come across in the data where the data reports. It's that that information that comes through from personal experience and interaction. And then by the spring of 2015, our idea here is to is to now focus on on that that duo, fourth grade teachers, and really get a kind of a sense of of what our next steps may be. What what does that look like for us, either moving forward with that pilot, or, as we discussed earlier, potentially discarding it if it doesn't begin to yield the kind of results that that we'd that we'd like to see. So I know I just my attempt was provide an overview and then really open it up for questions or or any comments that you may have that would be beneficial for us to as we move forward.
Ms. Parker?
Big picture, I'm really excited about this, because research with college students is showing that the in terms of retention, comprehension, that really print works better for them than digital. And the research is pretty all over the map for younger readers. And there's nothing conclusive. And I think a big part of that is, you know, every kid is different. And our district is different, and our our school communities are different. So will kids improve their lexile levels? Will they improve their literacy if they're English learners with this, if they are special ed with this, socioeconomic? And I hope that you guys will consider publishing whatever it is that you find, because I do think that this is important information for schools across the country. So, big picture, I think that this is an exciting research opportunity. And question here, it says, "Spring 2015." By that, do you mean spring 2016?
Yes, I'm sorry, spring 2016.
And a few other questions. One is, so you actually are going to pay for books, for eBooks?
Yes. So we will, we will be purchasing eBooks.
How many are you going to buy?
The cost is approximately $25 per student. And we'd be looking at two classes. So that's probably in the neighborhood of $1,200 to $1,500.
Okay. And you don't know how the number of titles that buys you?
No, I don't have that.
Okay.
But I can get it for you.
Okay. If you're talking about, you know, fourth graders, I assume it's and it's only fourth graders, and it's two classes, I assume that's a pretty limited number. I know, obviously, they can have up to 80,000, but...
And actually, Mr. Rickman might be able to provide more clarity on that.
The $25 is what light sale recommended. They said that's what the average amount spent by by districts to provide plenty of books to read. Those are purchased books. There's also an entire free library that comes along with this that's included at no cost. So these are more of our core literature titles that we'll buy, and also come into some of the more popular books that kids are reading in that age group.
Okay. A couple of questions, just with light sale. They do, they have their own lexile testing. How does that compare to the scholastic reading inventory?
Well, it it's great that you ask that, because actually, those are some of the guiding questions that we had around around the the pilot. So we wanted to to use other data measures to begin to to get a better sense and triangulate, because we have a couple of other assessments that we're using that that can measure lexile, including our STAR assessment. So we have this classic reading inventory and STAR reading that that can give us a sense. So this would give us three data points that we can then be able to to work from. The other piece to this is not just measuring lexiles, because that can also be really a singular data point. You know, there's different tools that measure that, but essentially, it's all one 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 way of measuring. The other thing, the other thing that we want to or the other component that we want to measure is habits. And that's a lot more challenging to measure, but we're looking to to be able to do that through the other assessments that are there, such as just time, time on task, and that there are ways to to measure that, include and also the use of some of the online, some of the features that it has to to begin to interact differently with text. So we're also looking at this as an opportunity to to begin to engage in getting getting a better sense of how students are reading, not just whether they're reading or not and improving or not. And this gives us that ability in a way that is more more real time. We don't we wouldn't have that necessarily with some of our other assessment measures. So it's a it's a nice added piece to this that we're certainly going to use as part of our of our evaluation.
Dr. Ramirez, could I add one thing?
Yes.
The data dashboard in this is amazing. It will tell you how long students spent on a page, how long they spent reading altogether, the words that they looked up, and the I mean, it just provides so much information to to guide the teacher's instructions, so they can look back and say, "Well, our students, 20 of our students looked up the same word, so maybe I should I should do something around that word. I should do some scaffolding around that word." So the instant access to data is what is the most exciting part about it.
And one last question. McKinley is not one of our one-to-one iPad schools. And so when you talk about students reading this at night or on the weekends, what is your expectation about what device they will be using?
Well, you're right. They're not one of the one of the one of the schools in the in the pilot. But what we wanted to do, there were some overages that we worked with with some additional devices that were part of the original rollout, that working with ETS, we were looking to to be able to provide those for the year, where they would be able to travel back and forth potentially. And that is that is really what we're what we're looking to to do, as also McKinley has built out their devices, their iPad devices in four through six. So I think as of this year, they're going to get, just through site funds, they're going to get pretty close, if not already, to one-to-one. And so they're they're also looking to begin to see how that process plays out in as part of their 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 school culture. So that's another another added piece. But but, you know, we just wanted to put it out there that that this is part of that original kind of set of devices that were ordered for the for the pilot.
Sorry, and one more thing. This is not, this is not a device pilot. This is a reading program pilot that happens to be on a device. And the value in it is kids taking it home, finishing a book, and then having instant access just to grab another book that they want to read. That's very exciting, not to have to wait to come back to a library, but to to instantly just grab whatever book they want to read and continue reading.
Thank you.
Obviously, it's not a free program. They're doing it for one reason, to expand it.
Sure.
Do we have any idea what this free program is worth? As if we were going to take the same program to another school, what is the real cost? I mean, we're getting into something, but it's obviously to go to 5,000, or not 5,000, but to a great number of students, the cost after, I don't know, is this good for one year? Is it good for two years? If they go to the fifth grade, is it still free to the fifth graders at McKinley?
Right. Well, we're looking at the cohort size for this year. And and in terms of bringing it to scale, there's a lot of different scales that we can use. So is that through a site? Is that across the district? Those are all different questions that that then we would have to have a broader discussion on on devices. In terms of bringing it to scale, you know, beyond this year, Mr. Rickman, do you know, do you know the the cost offhand on that what that would be?
I don't know the cost offhand. Their pricing model is a little different than most vendors in that they charge you like zero to 1,000 is one price, 1,000 to 2,000 is another. And I don't have that offhand. I don't remember the pricing. I remember thinking it wasn't completely out of line with other systems that we use. When we first when we found them, you know, I told them that this is not something we'd be willing to pay for without first piloting it. And they are, they have a lot of clients and were jumped at the opportunity to work to work with us. So they're providing it for free just for this one school year. And then we will have to make a decision whether it's is worth continuing.
I guess my question would be, I'd like to know what we're getting for free. What would if we had to pay for it, what would it be? So I'd like to know that.
Okay, I can get that for you, and I'll send it to you.
And two, I happened to Google this also. And the reviews by teachers, there were about 47 of them, and the vast majority were under the category of advocates. And then under that category, it said the pros, the cons, and suggestions. Almost every advocate, and there were there were not an advocate category, too, and there were only one or two of those. Vast majority were, quote, advocates. But some of the comments they made I found interesting. One, it's very costly, as a con, very costly. Two, not easy to use, which I found interesting. Two, not available at home, which I found interesting. And three was strange. If you have five kids who want to read a book, you got to buy five books. It's not a system where you can take one book and then have five people read it simultaneously. Sounds like you have to have, if you have 10 kids who want to read a book at the same time, you got to have, you got to pay for 10 books. And that's where the cost, I think, went. So I'd just be leery of those things and watch for them to to see how it goes. But in all, in general, the cons or the pros were, "It's fantastic." So that's the good news.
I'd like to address the the cost. The if you consider the device, having to buy the device, yes, the cost is exorbitant. And I think that that's...
On that issue, they did say, most of them, why can't it be for something other than iPad? And it seems like the program is designed, according to these comments, for iPads.
That's right. And that's because the the form factor of that device and the fact that it's it's a touch panel lends itself to this type of literacy tool.
Part of the interactivity of that of that, part of the interactivity of the program lends itself to an iPad device because of the way in which you can activate a thesaurus or highlight text that wouldn't necessarily be there in a different format.
And so but there actually is a cost to it. We are going to be buying the books.
The books, yes.
On the agenda, it said no cost.
Not the licenses, no.
It said no cost to the district on the agenda.
Okay, we'll make that that correction.
Ms. Parker?
Well, and just to follow up on that, it if 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 it really were just for the books, $25 per student, that's way more than we're spending on books right now, way more than we're spending on books. So as a limited pilot, that's fine. But it's like, you know, if you use the public library, if you're using Overdrive, they have licenses to use X number. And if it's not available, you get an order digitally, and you have your turn with the book when it comes up. And that's the same thing that would have to happen with us, because there's no way we would be able to spend that amount of money per student.
Ms. Idelson?
I sort of have a basic question. How is it studies, or what have you learned about children reading on a digital, you know, on the digital versus, I know when Kindles came out, it was, you know, preferred because it was black and white and all of that, and as opposed to the written printed book? I mean, is there concern with this? I mean, as far as, I know I'm stepping back, you know, but looking at it as, you know, teaching kids, encouraging the reading on something digital, what what do you understand about that?
Well, just to be clear, our attempt isn't to to let go of our libraries. Our libraries, in fact, this year, you know, we're going to be seeing an influx of of new titles and and building out the use of our of our libraries at the elementary. I can say that with certainty. So this isn't an attempt to do that. It's an attempt to begin to also start to turn our attention to just digital texts, which for many of our students have now become, it may maybe going back to the point that Ms. Parker made, maybe the the research isn't quite conclusive on that. And I would agree with with that, because it's a burgeoning kind of a format. But what I can say is that our kids are reading online all the time. They have devices. And and it's this divide between digital immigrants and digital natives. And our kids are growing up as digital natives, where where we just want to access what what is very comfortable for many of our kids, maybe not all of our kids, maybe not all of our kids. Is this going to be a preferred method? But we just want to begin to see what that would look like. And Ms. Parker used the the term a limited pilot. And then really, that's that's what it is. We're not looking at an entire grade level or entire school site. We're looking at two classrooms that can begin to give us a sense of what of what we're going to, we're going to inevitably have to examine much more closely.
Right. And then one other question. As far as the books that are pert, the texts that are purchased, what happens, say, after the program, if it were to expire? What about those books? What are they still owned by the district?
Yes, those would be owned by the district.
And can they be accessed by the district?
We would be able to. We'd have to look at what other platforms would support it, but we would, we would be able to own own those and and support them.
So almost any e-reader device, you can use them with. And I also wanted to point out that that the next big move in education is towards what are called OERs, or Open Educational Resources. The state of Washington just spent millions of dollars creating an Open Educational Resource Library, where they're not buying textbooks anymore. They're they're using vetted Open Educational Resources that are free. So to Ms. Parker's point, yes, we could never afford $25 per student unless we start looking at at these these OERs that are now available. And states, entire states have adopted OER libraries.
So then is it an unlimited amount, number of books, and you're just, it's like an open library?
Unlimited, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Did I understand, one of you to say that McKinley may have a one-to-one program this year to take home, iPads to go home?
No, no, that's that. That would be outside of the pilot. This would this would just mean that in their upper grades, they would have enough devices purchased over the last few years that they would be one-to-one. This would not be a carry home. This would be in the classroom.
In the classroom. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to the result. I presume Dr. Gemma Wan will have you go through the process of evaluation and give us a report.
She already has.
Okay.
So, yes.
That'd be your first test case. Good.
Oh, there'll be plenty more before this.
Okay. Okay. Let's go on to H six. First reading of Admin 1330, use of school facilities and exhibit center fees.
So, Mr. President, this is the exhibit to the AR that we discussed the last board meeting. I have not had an opportunity to meet with the principals to get their input and find from them how they think they could get input from their parent communities in relationship to the alcohol use of facilities. Once I have gotten that, I'll report back to the board my findings. But this is the exhibit, and we need to get this discussed and approved as quickly as possible, so it's effective for this school year. Ms. Jete?
So that's it in a nutshell. AR 1330 is the use of facilities. And the only part that we have changed is the schedule of fees due to the new regulations at the at the very bottom. And basically, what we would like to do, can you go up a little bit, Brian? What we'd like to do is just reference the fee schedule instead of having it be part of the AR, so that we can make, the board can make changes to this without having to bring back the whole AR. We do have a lot of work on the BP and the AR due to the alcohol use. But meanwhile, we need to get rolling on the fee change... need to get rolling on the fee changes for our current applications. So as soon as we approve this policy or this regulation, we can then put in effect the new fee schedule.
Are there any major changes in the fees, any dramatic ups or downs?
Well, there, there are probably a slight downward use in the non-school age. It's one and a half times, but it wasn't a big, a big difference. You know, I, what we did is we did the math, we pulled all the data, we made the calculation, the replacement, it's all about the, you know, the facility and those were the fees that we came up with. We did increase the application fee because that had not been raised in several years. And, you know, right now, we have one person pretty much dedicated to civic use permits. So it's quite costly to do an application, just...
Ms. Parker?
I actually see some really dramatic increases. For example, cafeteria, well cafeteria, it was, for a direct fee, it was, at an elementary, it was $23 and now it's 356.
Yes, but if that is an hourly and... Where are they?
Cafeteria's up a little bit.
Go up.
There it is.
These are for a half and a full day. And you're right, the hourly wage has gone up, but, you know, and what facilities they usually want to use is the Santa Barbara facility because it's newly renovated. But we have, we have new appliances out there, we have so many things that these people can use and so we, after discussing and putting it in the formula that drives the whole fee increase, this is, this is what we came up with, with the replacement of the kitchen and everything that's in it. And you have to have a food handler on, on the premise when these people, when people rent the place.
Who rents the cafeteria at Santa Barbara High?
We have a, we have a nonprofit person in there for making the pickles, he is the pickle guy, and he then gives us pickles and, not just pickled, but pickled vegetables and things.
Sorry, this is the wrong direction, I totally didn't expect. Okay.
Okay.
Maybe you shouldn't ask that.
Sounds like I'm a pickle.
When do we get the pickles here?
Yeah. We eat in any of our cafeterias, you'll get the pickles, or the pickled beets, or pickled green beans.
Just for the theaters and the cafeterias, I want to be sure that we aren't blindsiding anybody, especially on the nonprofit side. And I, I want to be sure we get some community input on that because that's, that's where the big increases are.
Well, we do have separate MOUs for the theaters in certain areas. With all three of the high schools, we have, we have now someone using ours every Sunday and that is a different MOU. We do that out of the, out of the realm of the civic use format. Even though all the money goes into the area for civic use, it's then allocated out towards the theater managers to help pay for the theater managers, which I believe keeps the theater in a better condition. And we do have, you know, a lot of nice theaters now, the Aliens and now Locombra, we, you know, we have to take care of these facilities.
Okay, can we bring this back on the consent or approve it now?
I think I'd bring it back on the consent for sure and, and I want to be sure that anybody that is using these facilities on a regular basis, if they can be notified so that they have a chance to email us and let us know their opinion on these changes, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
H7, first reading of board policies for personnel employee drug testing, BP 4112.41 and AR 4112.41.
Mr. Torino?
President Herron, esteemed board members, this current BP and AR we do not currently have, so the Center for Unified School District Board has no current policies implementing related to industry standards or for safety and sensitive positions for drug and alcohol testing. We're bringing this forward to you to determine whether or not we want to move in that duration in creating a policy for our staff.
Dr. Paz?
My, my, my big question was just, who would this apply to?
That could be determined by the board.
Who would you suggest that this applied to?
Well, we believe it needs to be applied to, in particular, anyone who has a safety sensitive job.
Like?
Drivers.
Drivers.
Delivery people.
Delivery people.
Who are out in the public in our vehicles.
Because certainly...
Remember, this is pre-application, this is not ongoing drug testing for employees.
Because I would have thought that any teacher and administrator frankly was in a safety sensitive position in terms of taking care of children, but...
Thank you.
Dr. Paz?
I guess my question would be is that if you all a staff, or, you know, thought about having this, you had in mind a person, and so if that is who you're thinking, I guess, hearing more about that and not necessarily expanding it to, as my fellow board members are thinking in terms of teacher positions, then that's something to kind of think through so we're kind of a little more clear about.
We've done it.
Okay.
I mean, we've identified the positions that we believe should be subjected to pre-employment drug testing.
Pre-employment.
That's what this is about, pre-employment.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting that we look at the teachers, but I think what we're trying to clarify is that line between what we're thinking about for the positions you're thinking about versus maybe more broadly.
Well, we can bring them back with the lines filled in, but we wanted your input.
Ms. Lamont?
Thank you, and I actually asked Dr. Cash this earlier, just, you know, I was trying to think, well, what happens, you know, if someone tests positive for illegal or legal drugs, actually, if there's medical conditions, is there case law that tells us what we should do, what we shouldn't do, how not to discriminate when certain things are legal? So I don't feel I'm well-versed in that area, so that's why I brought that up, but just what other implications might something like this have? I, and I actually asked the question of who does this apply to as, as well, and it sounds like there are job positions, not people, but job positions that you're thinking, and I would, I think, benefit from seeing that as well. Are we thinking broadly, are we thinking, you know, limited to those that handle certain types of equipment or vehicles? But I also feel like I need a little bit more on this just legal piece to feel like we're not going to try to do something good and then try to figure out how to, you know, go around an issue if something comes up.
And this is not retroactive to current employees, it's new employees coming on.
Applicants will sign a form, yeah. Applicants, applicants, applicants.
And then the question of what's the threshold of what's acceptable or not, too? Is that spelled out? I don't...
No, not in either.
Ms. Parker?
Just also, as we look further into this, what other districts are doing it and what positions they're doing it for? And just again, following back on the legal piece, I don't know if there's any ed code around or, or code of regulations around who you can do pre-employment drug screening on, so I'm curious about that.
Can we get that information? We'll be able to get that information.
Okay, thank you.
In the case of like bus drivers, are those contracted for us?
Yes, and they are drug tested.
Right, I would suspect.
They're ongoing, drug tested.
Okay, thank you very much. Coming events, Dr. Cash outlined those in his comments, anything to add to that? I know the Day of Caring is coming up by United Way and I hope we have participation at some of our schools. It's always nice to go to the schools and visit them and see the, something like the 18th or 19th, I forget, I don't have it offhand.
It's the weekend before the next board meeting, the Saturday before.
Yeah, 19th, yeah, 19th.
And the next board meeting is on Monday. Remember, it's not on Tuesday because Rasha Shana starts.
Oh, thank you very much.
We moved that to Monday night.
I'll have to check my calendar to see if I put that in there.
I think you did, you brought that up at one point already, Mr. Herron.
Did I? Okay, good. That was too long ago. Future agenda items, adjournment, future agenda items. We've knocked off, thank you, Dr. Cash, quite a few, which is really nice to see and nice to, I'll give out an updated report after this meeting. And I'd like to add, as I mentioned earlier, in the month of March, have a review of the part of Illuminate that we're using in order to see if any changes need to be made or if we want to continue the program for another year, because I think there's a 60-day cancellation clause in that contract.
I have a question about that. By review, do we want a staff review or do we want also some feedback from users?
Well, I think a review includes, you know, the staff, but I would hope in that review there'd be some indication of the users.
Just as, so board members are aware, if we don't use Illuminate DNA, we'll be purchasing another program to use. The staff will have to learn how to use.
I just, I, I'm only doing it to get the discussion there to see if in fact, the results of what we, we think they are.
I think that's a great plan.
And hopefully they are. Adjournment, we've got at least another five minutes, but, okay, we'll, we'll adjourn it.